United States of America, and to reelect, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please take real call?
Dr. Anne Herring.
President.
John Fidler. Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Jason Mel.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Robert Quinter. Julia Shaffer.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor Sharon Montaigne, and the members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristy Haller Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Horie, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki, Director of Human Resources, Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator, as well as Board Secretary. First on the agenda is a presentation by PFM Bond Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Well, I am back. I know I was at several meetings over the last several months when we were discussing the potential of the restructuring of the existing debt with the plans to consider future capital needs ultimately that I think we're going to talk about tonight, and maybe over the next couple of months as you're getting through, you know, your capital improvement planning. Just to kind of run through what we did, just briefly, we went through and refinanced and restructured a couple of issuances, the 2019 and 2020, which allowed for the district to kind of build into their budget a reduced borrowing rate and borrowing payment going forward of about $5 million per year, with the idea that if in the future, we would be able to, you know, add additional funding to do various capital projects. So, we completed everything we expected. It came in lower than what we expected, which is good news, and now we're back today to talk about kind of how we should think about new borrowings. So now, given that thought, there is some things to kind of consider as far as how much to borrow, when to borrow it, should you do it with one issue or multiple issues. Some of those things are driven by your cash flow, you know, when you need the money to do these various projects. And for some of you may remember, when we did the initial financing, we also did a, what is called a reimbursement resolution. We established something that said that, over the course of time, as you spend money to pay for some of your capital projects, when you're ready to issue the tax exempt debt, whenever that may be, you can reimburse your, your capital funds, your general fund with the proceeds of the debt, which we did. So, the expectation here is, should we move forward, some of those funds that you've expended or will expend will be paid for and covered by the borrowing as well. So, the thought will be had, we implemented it, and I think it's going to work out quite well. Hopefully this moves. There you go. No one can read that, but I'm just going to talk a little bit about what this says. So, first off, when you borrow money, the things you need to consider are really two things. The useful lives of the various projects, right? We're talking about schools and renovations. Obviously, those are going to have long-term useful lives, so we can amortize it over a long period of time. That's most important. Second is, the timing of when you're going to spend the money. You, as a board, have to have a reasonable expectation to spend 85% of the money within three years. We say 100%, but it really is 85%. Based on all the discussions we had, you know, several months ago, given the feasibility studies and the updates, we believe that much, if not all, of the projects they were talking about will get done within that period of time. So, that's, that we think we're going to hit that mark. And then third is, something called arbitrage rebate. And I'm, it's a sun, you know, it's a summer night, but going through tax law is not something you probably want to hear tonight, but the bottom line is, what arbitrage rebate, or the concept behind that is, is when you borrow funds, you pay a certain interest rate on your debt. So, let's say the average rate on the new bonds is 3.5%. You can take the proceeds of those bonds and invest them in anything you want, to a certain point, whatever school code allows you to. Back in the good old days, not that long ago, when you invested your money, you earned five basis points, and you were happy to get that. Well, now you can get 5% or so on that money currently. So, there's a strategy of thinking about, if you were to borrow your money, if you decide to split up the transaction into one or two transactions, because you could potentially earn arbitrage, anything above the yield, because of a special rule and a special exemption called the small issue exemption. So, one of the things that we're going to ask you to think about, we'll think about it for you, but present, is potentially splitting up any future borrowing into maybe two transactions. $15 million is the small issue exemption for school districts. We've been talking about something like $19 million worth of projects. So, there is some thought, depending on how fast you spend the money, and the earnings that you could potentially earn, that if you did this in multiple transactions, you could benefit from a mathematical standpoint. I'm going to work through that part of it. So, everything we're going to talk about tonight is really kind of thinking about it from the big number, $19 million. But, when we ask you to consider, you know, resolutions, or how we kind of decide to do the structuring, it's very possible the math may work where it makes sense to split it up into two issues. So, I wanted to point that out, because now we're kind of digging into the borrowing part. And frankly, unlike it's been any other time in the last 20 years, we now, right now, have this unique opportunity to make some money on the money you borrow. So, more to come in the future, but understand that's some of the considerations that we have as a finance team when we're thinking about doing something like this. Turn to the next page. Talked about that, talked about reimbursement resolution. So, just for everyone's full disclosure, this page just shows the current capital and planning debt service that you have borrowed from day one. So, if you do nothing else today, the bottom right-hand corner is what you expect to pay in debt service annually. It will be approximately $4,950,000 per year between now and 2032, and eventually it'll drop off in 2033. So, as planned, this is kind of the way it looks. All the debt is mentioned, as well as the potential call provisions. So, this is what we're working off of now, going forward, should we, you know, borrow some additional funds. You've all seen this many times, but this is the plan. So, the blue and the orange were the kind of refinancing, restructuring that we talked about that gave us the end result of the yellow. And now, the red is kind of where we stand on a potential, should you borrow funds, what that could look like, and what the overall amortization and annual payment would be. So, it's really just a combination of the yellow column, plus the proposed red column will give you your new budgeted payment. So, from our perspective, if all goes as planned, and we borrow the full amount, whether it's one or two issue, we'll figure that out, it will look like something like $5.8 million as a budgeted payment between now and a number of years, you know, for the next, you know, 15, 20 years or so. So, that's the way it looks. It's not too far off of what we kind of talked about, you know, several months ago, but really, the kind of the real question here is just, do we do one or two, or, you know, how does your cash flow look for these various projects? So, I'll stop. It looks like Brian, I know, and I talked about your draw schedule, so maybe he has an update on that.
I just also wanted to say, I did put on everyone's desk or spot what we talked, or actually, March 20th meeting, which is the exact same sheet, if you notice, March 20th, and then the 7-3. And there's a slight decrease in our effort, but we also are very conservative when we put the effort out right now until we actually have the numbers, just like we did in March. You know, we put it out, and the numbers came in better, and we hope that if we put this one out, numbers come in better, but we are conservative in those numbers. But, you know, if you wanted to look at what we talked about in March, and what we're talking about today, it's pretty much.
Spot on.
Not insignificant difference, if you want to call it that. Very slight decrease.
Yep, exactly right. So, you know, there's a little more detail now. We're starting to show some, you know, estimated interest earnings on this debt. Again, as we get some more information about how fast you'll spend the money, we'll kind of build the model a little bit more, but from a high level, you know, this is what we're asking you to at least start to think about when it comes to the proposed borrowing. Questions?
Jamie, if, if we would do two, is it calendar year or from issuance?
It's calendar year.
So, I mean, if we closed, if we, next month, did the parameters resolution and moved forward, and we only did the first issue, which would probably close in October.
Correct.
We could actually start a second issue to close in January?
Yep.
And you want to have it arbitrage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, you hit all the high notes. Really, the question is, from how much you could potentially earn, and the additional costs of doing a second transaction, is really kind of the math problem that we're kind of weighing here. And, I guess, interest rate risk, which is an important one, right? Because we're delaying a portion of the borrowing amount, so it's possible that rates could go higher to start the year. One thing I would add, and there's, you know, kind of minor notes here, if you did split this up, more than likely, the second transaction would be bank qualified, which just means that because you're issuing under $10 million in the calendar year, you'd have a shorter call provision, so it'd be kind of a five-year call provision. It gives you a little additional flexibility in the future. But, generally speaking, you know, that's really what we're thinking about here. It's, it's very close, is where, is what I'm getting at here. So, I couldn't tell you today, we should do it one way versus the other, but kind of working with Stifel, and kind of getting the draw schedules built into this, we can kind of give you a much better answer over the coming months. I'm happy to stop, and, you know, although I skipped over it, if anyone wants to learn about the market itself, you know, Stifel's here to kind of talk about the bond market, but, you know, really, this is, from my point, is really kind of starting point of how we want to think about this. And, you know, obviously, we want to come back at a future meeting with a parameters resolution, and do the necessary things to kind of get us ready to go, so you can reimburse yourselves the money that you spent, and lock in some of the interest rates. So, really the last page of this.
Jamie, last, last time, I think, when we spoke, one of the things we talked about was our rating.
Yes.
You know, is there any update on, on that, how we think it's going to look, what our risk is for a rating going down?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, the rating came back as expected. Ultimately, one, they, they provided feedback that said, if there is essentially not some add additions to the fund balance, there could be a change in your rating. They understood the plan that we went through, and ultimately understood what we were trying to accomplish. So, they saw the plan as far as the borrowings, as well as how things looked, and they see the way things are going to look in the future. So, conceivably, the board, in my viewpoint, as you make your decisions going forward, you want to do your best to maintain a structural balance, and, you know, increase your fund balance over the course of time to kind of meet the standards of what the rating agency was considering. That would be my high-level viewpoint. I think that's probably what you got from it, Mark.
Sure. You know, one of the, one of the lies that we.
Could you go up to the mic, just so our listeners at home could, could hear?
As, as Jamie alluded to before, one of the, the things that you guys did very thoughtfully was to adopt that reimbursement resolution. And that reimbursement resolution allows you to take some of the money from the bond proceeds and put it back into your general fund. The rating agencies typically like to see that. They like to see liquidity, a healthy fund balance, you know, for things that we just saw, you know, occur, you know, in this county just very recently, for that very reason. So, the, the rating agencies always wait to see what you actually do. So, if, if the school district, and Jamie, and Brian, and the board here all make a decision as to how much you reimburse yourself, take money out of the bond proceeds, and put it back into your general fund. And, you know, if you were to do that, that would probably make the rating agencies happy, because it shows, you know, some additional liquidity that the school district has for unforeseen circumstances.
Yeah. Mark, from our rating call, the other thing they stressed, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that we were constantly using fund balance and not balancing a budget. And this was before we actually passed the balanced budget this year, so that's actually a plus two, correct? You know, and their concern was that we did not have a history of a balanced budget.
Yeah, for the last few years, but, you know, that's, them reviewing that and seeing what the projections were going to look like, following the refinancing, restructuring, as well as the future plan. We showed them what it would look like, and, you know, as you do those things.
Now, we're approving it, too. Okay. So, Brian, as, as we've done some of these projects and pulled it out of our capital budget, is your plan to put the funds from the resolution back into the capital budget, or would you put that into the general budget?
Now, I, the resolution, I think, is to replenish the capital fund, or rainy day fund, if you want to call it. The, what the board had approved already is the tennis courts and the junior high HVAC project, which we're doing this summer, because it has to be done. But, once we get the bond proceeds, then we'll replenish that, so we always have a little bit over $3 million for emergency repair or capital projects, because, you know, as you said today, you have a neighboring district that's had a catastrophe.
Yeah, I would, I would add, things that you can't control, as we all know, is the state budget has, obviously, we're not there yet. So, that could impact funding that is received by certain school districts. You know, we've heard, our, our firm has seen, you know, various schools come to us and say, hey, we need a TRAN, which is a tax revenue anticipation note, to help them during the slow times, which is really this part of the year. So, kind of liquidity is very, very important at this point in time, for purposes of how you, you fund things, so.
So, I feel like I'm hearing different things, and maybe it's me, but it sounds like these guys are saying to put it back into the general fund, because if we put it back into the capital fund, we can't access it for that liquidity.
Well, we're taking, actually, what we're, what the board authorized me to use was a capital fund to fund these, but then replenish the capital fund. I did not touch a general fund, because, you know.
I thought, I would add, the, the rating agencies look at all funds as.
They look at one pot. We have.
That helps, thank you. We were talking about two different.
Yeah, yeah. It is, there's a general fund, there's a capital fund, but when they think about it, they know that if there was something that happened, you have the ability to access those funds for other things.
Understood. Thank you.
So, yeah, I would say, you know, from a planning perspective, you know, as we've discussed, I think it is important. Obviously, this is a large financing, so we obviously want to, you know, get it, get the strong rating and do it, but I think our plans are looking good, and I think we've done what we needed to do. Obviously, we may have future financings to do, so it is important to kind of maintain the credit rating as, as discussed. So, again, from my perspective, if you see the bottom right-hand corner, as we started talking about, you know, tonight, we're kind of here introducing, reintroducing the concept. We'd like to come back at your next meeting, which I think is in mid-August, give or take, with an advertisement of a parameters resolution. And frankly, the way it could be written is, it could allow for one or multiple issues as the option. So, we don't, again, necessarily have to decide if we're going to do one or two, but it'll allow us that flexibility, and we would have the approvals to do the project. So, obviously, from your perspective, you know, you have to agree that what you're financing are, in fact, the projects that we're talking about here, which is, of course, important. And then from there, you know, we would go through the rating process again, and all those other things. Again, we don't expect anything dramatic to happen, since we've done all the background work already. Once that's done, we have the rating, we can go to market when, when it's best served. And again, just given some of the cash flow, and, you know, you want to reimburse yourselves, you know, relatively soon, we'd, you know, like to get to market, you know, in September or so, and get your money by, by October.
And just a reason to have him here tonight, August 1st, at our COW meeting, we have Quandale with updated numbers on the capital projects. They've been going through the building, engineers, the architects, when everything was that list, and then hopefully, we'll get the finalized, what do you want to do, or what you don't want to do. You know, there's, there's things we have to do, there's security issues we have to do, we've already gone through that. It's still looking like the $19 million number would take care of pretty much everything. If we did go for excess interest earnings, that could always be thrown into.
The second issue.
The second issue, or you can put that aside for rainy day, if you wanted. You know, because I don't, I don't think the interest earnings are subject to.
It's considered kind of proceeds, so it needs to be considered.
It has to be as a capital reserve, but not subject, does that have to be spent within the?
You're going to have to spend it.
Five years?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the capital reserve we have in there doesn't have to be spent in five years, and that can be held indefinitely. That's why we want to replace that, where the bond proceeds have to be spent five. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, again, until the math works out, the, the one value of having the second, the second issue would be, we can kind of clean up whatever the final costs are, and maybe you need a little less, or need a little bit more. You have that little ability to have a shorter opportunity to refund it in the future, or you also have, maybe, if there's some changes to the state, and there's reimbursement, maybe, on something, who knows? You know, we have that, that opportunity as well.
But, the other thing is, Jamie, pretty much said, you have to weigh the cost of issuance, which is, you know, could be $70,000, $80,000.
Additional, yeah.
You know, that's your bond attorney fees, your, your underwriting fees, your rating fees, and, you know, compared to, are you going to make more in interest?
Exactly right.
That way than if you didn't, so.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if.
But right now, just our general account, we're receiving almost 5%, you know, which, you know, when he said five basis points, that's .05%.
Yes, it is. You were happy about that. So, again, more to come on that, but I just wanted to kind of, it's a strategy that we're implementing with our schools. Outside of that, that's really the plan here. Again, you know, we'll be, we would be back, assuming everyone's comfortable with at least the concepts, as you kind of run through the, the draw schedule and the update of, of the projects. We'll kind of adjust our analysis based on, you know, the feedback we got from you, but as you might remember, the parameters resolution allows for some flexibility, so it'll be larger numbers than what you expect to borrow, and that would give, you know, a little, little time as well to, you know, dial it down of what you actually need.
No other questions? Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Oh, no problem.
Sorry for the issues getting here. Hopefully, you have an easier time on the way out. Sorry for the issues getting here. Hopefully, you have an easier time on the way out.
I was... I must admit, I was actually meeting with clients in Mating Creek, Otaloni, and Spring Township yesterday, and two of the three meetings got canceled because...
Yeah, no doubt. No doubt. All right. Thank you again.
Have a good night.
Okay, we will not be amending the agenda, so we'll move towards the superintendent report. Dr. Haller.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Good evening, everyone. So, I just wanted to take a moment to highlight one of the projects that was completed over the last couple of weeks. Brian Fike is, was very concerned that paparazzi was going to be in our school gym taking photos of our new gym floor. So, he wanted us to have a special unveiling. So, you can see, this is our new... This is...
I see a couple scratches.
So, we are actually very excited about it, so... And, you know, thank you on behalf of our high school and, of course, our athletes who are on that for, you know, multiple sports. Our... We only have really this one main gym that we primarily use for our sports. We do have the auxiliary gym, but this is our main gym. So, we're very, we're excited, we're pleased with the way that we... That it came out. And Jen Breton is here. Thank you to Jen Breton, who worked to put together this design. So, it's a departure from what has been done before, but we're very excited about it. So, there you go, Mr. Fike. We beat the media. We beat the paparazzi.
I'm sorry. I wanted the board to see it before the public. I just felt that was right.
Yeah. We've been teasing him all day about it. So, and then, very shortly, the tennis courts will also be completed. That has been a work in progress, but because of the weather, the rain, they, you know, needed to wait some time before they could complete that project. So, Brian was out there today admiring.
He's putting the colors down.
Yeah, he was very excited. He was very excited about that.
They actually have a window. They don't expect rains.
Yeah. So, but in all seriousness, the projects are underway. The junior high, there's some security measures that have been taken that they're making a great deal of progress on. So, these projects are underway, and we're very grateful to the board for their support in providing the necessary means to make this school district a very nice place and a safe place for our students. So, thank you. So, that is my report.
Thank you very much. There are no sign-ups for public comments, so we'll move to board meeting minutes. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's board meetings. June 6, 2023, special voting meeting. June 6, 2023, committee of a whole meeting, as well as June 202023 board voting meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Treasurers' report and payment requests. If there is no objection, we'll adopt a motion to approve the June 2023 treasurer's report and payment request stated June 21, 2023 to July 11, 2023.
Yes, Dr. Herring, just one quick thing on payments. I just wanted to bring the attention to the community that we did have four lines on here from our capital reserve. And Brian, maybe you can just talk about, you know, this is part of what we were just talking about with spending from the capital and what we're going to be reimbursing with. And I know that one of those was a big number, so just maybe you could just talk on what they were.
Okay. I think the one big number you're talking about was one of the first payments on the junior high HVAC project, heating, ventilation, air conditioning. They started that. They should have 90% of it done by the end of the summer. There's some follow-up work that'll be done during the year, mostly of controls. But the actual units and everything will be in place before school starts. Sorry, Alex, we had to move him out. They have no heat or no air conditioning in the building, but the building will be better when it's done. That was one of the projects the board approved to take out of our capital reserve fund, which is about $3.6 million. This project was $3.2 million alone. The other project that was on there was the tennis courts that has started. The pavement was done three weeks ago, and then we had all the rain. It was sort of interesting. I watched them pave. They paved one way, and then they paved the other way, so there can't be any seams when they do the painting. And today, they first put a base coat down, then they started with the actual colors. The court, I think, is green with blue in the middle, the actual courts, and then the white lines. So, those are the two major projects out there. We also had the payment of the gym floor, which you just saw, was in there. That was out operational because that has less than a 15-year life. And the third was one of the final payments on the bus maintenance facility, which was approved two years ago.
And these newer projects that we did, what we were just talking to Jamie and his firm about, these are projects where we can reimburse ourselves to re-put it into the capital budget.
Right. The HVAC project is around $3.2 million, and the tennis courts, I think, was $290,000. And, you know, the reason I have their capitals is because they have more than a 15-year life.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no further objection, the treasurer's report and payment requests are approved. On to education committee, Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. First up is the enrollment report. If anybody doesn't have, has any questions or comments? No? Then moving on to field trips. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following field trips beyond the 60-mile radius. Number one, the senior high girls cross-country team traveling to Gettysburg High School to participate in the Gettysburg Invitational on October 6 and 7.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the early graduation requests for January 2024 for the following nine students as per district policy 217, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Moving on, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following list of conference requests.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay. On to letter E. It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the statement of work for agreement to perform services for Exeter Township School District with the BCIU. It's down below.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves an agreement between Kids Peace and the Exeter Township School District to provide extended school year services for students 816223 and 817223 for the period July 5, 2023 to August 15, 2023, at a cost of $85 per day, per student.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve a tuition agreement between Access Learning Academy and the Exeter Township School District to provide alternative education placement, excuse me, for the 2023-24 school year at a total cost of $240 per student, per day.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. It is recommended that the board of school directors approves the attached 2023-24 school year agreement with the Berks County Intermediate Unit to provide services for students as detailed in the agreement at an estimated cost of $108,073, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
If I may, Dr. Herring, just a note, we have a slight increase in the cost of these services for the upcoming year, but it's largely due to we had a student move in, a young student who requires some initial Braille instruction.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve a tuition agreement between River Rock Academy and the Exeter Township School District to provide an alternate, alternative education placement for the 2023-24 school year at a cost of $29,557.45, excuse me.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approve a tuition agreement between the Pathway School and the Exeter Township School District to provide extended year, extended school year services for student 818223 from July 5, 2023 through August 11, 2023, at a total of $8,300.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the board of school directors approves a settlement agreement and release between the parents individually on their own behalf and on the behalf of their minor child, student 8532324, as proposed and further authorizes the board president and board secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Forgive me. I think I read the last one instead of the...
No, the wording's the same. It's two different stews.
No, I'm making sure I said the right student number.
The right number.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to...
I think you did 853 as the first one.
Okay, good. Thank you. I saw it. I was a little dyslexic there for a second. Okay.
There's a lot of twos, threes.
Yeah, I know. That's why. I just want to make sure I was reading both correctly. Sorry. It is recommended that the board of school directors approves a settlement agreement and release between the parents individually on their own behalf and on behalf of their minor child, student 8542324, as proposed and further authorizes the board president and board secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And that's all for the education committee, then?
Thank you, Dr. Battler. Personnel committee, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Under item A, it's recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following resignations. Under administrative staff, item one. Under certificated staff, items one, two. Support staff, items one, two, and extracurricular advisors, items one, two, and three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, it is recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following retirements under certificated substitutes, items one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, under appointments, it is recommended the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following appointments. Certificated staff, support staff, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item D, it is recommended the board of school directors approves the following staff's summer work under certificated staff and support staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item E, it's recommend the board of school directors approves or ratifies the following requests for change of status, administrative staff one and support staff one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item F, it's recommend the board of school directors approves the following additional assignment stipend, item one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And that is it for the personnel committee.
Thank you very much. Finance facilities, audit, Mr. Malth.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Starting off with item A, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the contracted transportation routes for the 2023-2024 school year, BCIU for BCTC runs, and as well as Berks Catholic, St. Ignatius, and High Point runs. Atlas for the New Story Run. Attachments enclosed.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, could we get an update on the BCTC transportation and how that's going to be working? Are we going to be responsible for some of that? How much has the BCIU taken on? And as a result of that, what did we see as a decrease in tuition from BCTC?
So, last year, 2223 budget, the BCIU was $1,117,000, almost $111,18,000. This year, the budget's $1,077,000. So, they decreased it roughly $60,000. But in every previous year, they increased the budget by about $50,000, so a net about $110,000 savings. Or it's not really savings because their biggest expense was trying to find bus drivers, which they couldn't. They had four different contractors, and their rates kept on going up and up. In 2223, they tried to force it down our throats and take it back then, and we said we needed a year. I think Mr. Fedler would remember that the board told them to do it one more year and give the schools a chance to try to find bus drivers or figure out how to handle those routes, and that's this year. Our biggest problem was we don't have enough buses to do that, nor do we have enough drivers. So, we were able to contract with BCIU, and there is some savings. You can see in the one, we're only paying half of the day because we're also transporting with Antietam School District going to the same VOTEC. So, there is additional cost to us this year, but it's probably what our increase would have been anyway from the IU's cost, and it might even been higher, or not the IU, the VOTEC school. It probably would have been higher there if they were able to find contractors because when we bid out these, the contractors that did bid were a lot higher. I didn't even show them because they basically told us, this is what we'd be. You don't want us to do them for you.
So, will this, will this be 100% done by the BCIU, then? Exeter will not be providing any drivers?
Correct, for the VOTEC. Also, I think in this one, we have the Prokial Schools, which last year, we did contract out one of the Prokial Schools. But just the fact I didn't want to have to contract out our regular students because I think the parents deserve to know who the drivers are, and, you know, there's no change.
And will this, because we're doing this with multiple districts, or at least Antietam, will this affect the timing of our students getting back to the buildings?
No.
They'll still get back when they normally did?
Yeah, because they have to... Well, like, our students have to be at BCTC for their lunch. They don't eat lunch here, so we have to get them over there by their lunchtime. So, actually, I think ours is a second route. They pick up Antietam us and then go over there. So, it should not affect...
On the way home?
On the way home. I think we're first off.
Okay.
So...
Great. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, if no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, item B, next item is a discussion item. It is recommended that the board of school directors discuss the purchase of bus cameras.
There's three different items we could be discussing, so I'll send the next round, too. This is the last item we'll be discussing. So, if you remember, back in March, we had presentations. We had bus...
Bus patrol.
Bus patrol, and they were telling us that it's $6,200 a month, but they're going to take all the revenue from the stop cameras, and then, you know, that would all set up. set up, but no matter what, if they had no revenue, we'd still be paying 6,200 a month or 72 or 73,000. The Board was a little bit skeptical. It basically fell off the the radar for a while, but the Board also asked me to try to find out what it would cost if we went out and purchased them ourselves and we didn't have to worry about a maintenance contract every year. So I I put the original Bus Patrol contract and quote, which is a 6,250 a month, and I also had a Co-Stars quote from Fortress Mobile, which we would purchase everything, install, they would install the cameras. First year cost would be 174,000, but after that, our annual fleet management's cost would be 5,640 dollars a year. I I know this is the first time you've seen this, but I just wanted to throw this out. Do we want presentations from these? Do we still want to come back with Bus Boss and ask him to give us some more information? I I've checked, I think, two out of the 12 schools that were talking to them in the county did go with Bus Patrol. I'm not sure what happened with the others, whether they didn't sign up or they're they were holding off too. I think they had a reluctance to figure that fines would cover their their annual fees, and they didn't want to commit to a high annual, so...
Yeah, I I think the the outstanding question I know I had with Bus Patrol was the, essentially, the the agreement or the contract, there really wasn't anything I recall seeing in there that allowed us to break the contract if there were, you know, specific circumstances where we were unhappy with the service. So if you if you did the math, from my recollection, from when we were looking at the contract, if you do terminate, you are still responsible for the technology fees for those five years, which, you know, 6,250 a month equates to 375,000 at the end of five years for that contract agreement. So I think that that is still an outstanding question I have on my mind with Bus Patrol is, I don't want us to lock into a long-term agreement where we end up, or could very well end up spending more than what we would spend for actually just buying the the hardware outright. So I think that's kind of where my hesitation still lies with that.
At the time, I had had a concern from a resident, because with Bus Patrol, they kept their server, so all the storage, they kept all the storage. With Fortress Mobile, is that the same, where their server keeps it, or do we keep that video? Where's that video stored?
We can, if we want to put in our own server, we can put our own server. What I actually had quoted was a live GPS sent video, which would be Wi-Fi upload instead of have to take a card off. Right now, I know Lorelai's here, and they're they're constantly pulling cards for videos, and our cards only hold, what, three days? If that. So it it really depends, you know, we'd have a server, but it depends how much storage you'd want to keep. Right now, our our storage is on a little video card that holds two or three days worth of videos.
So if we went with Fortress Mobile, they in no way procure that video before we get it? Is that correct?
No, no, it's...
We are the only ones that have ownership of the video?
Correct, right.
Okay.
And this this option I have is actually the Wi-Fi download, you know, when you get back to the base, we can actually download it through Wi-Fi from, you know, the secure server, from the bus to the the server itself.
And was this project built into our current fiscal year budget?
Half of it was, and we had 80,000 set in reserves in our general fund for future replacement of cameras, so, yeah, pretty much, we're 160,000 total. And this is 170.
Is the plan to purchase or do this all at once, or are we going to do this in phases?
If they do the install, which is in there, they'd want to do it all at once, because they'd send out a crew to install the cameras.
Okay.
You know. They they did tell me that if you have electric buses, there'd probably be an additional, because there's no space to run the conduit through the ceiling, and there's, you know, they have to, but we don't have that. Yet.
Brian, could we just take a step backwards for just a second? What's the condition of our current cameras? Are they, have they become obsolete? Do they still function? Is there a reason why we have to replace all the equipment that we have currently?
They're getting to end of life, they're getting to end of support. The, you you've seen some videos on 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 the newer cameras, and we only have two buses with newer cameras, and they're very, what would I say, detailed? Where the old cameras, it's, you can make out people, but it's hard as the further back you go.
Okay, so the the current cameras, they function, but the clarity is is not there?
And the stop arms that we do have, you can't pick, it's hard to pick up any type of of license plate. There's the ability, I don't know, Lorelai?
There's blind spots, you can't, the driver is out of view, and the the door where the parents would be if you have confrontation, it's not in view. There's very limited views on what we currently have.
Right.
Okay, so there's no, there's no value in retaining those any longer than we have to, and it's time to upgrade, is what you're saying?
Yeah, they're they're basically recording conversations and noise, and and some video.
Yeah.
You know, you'll have video of anyone going past it in the bus, but it's hard to reach certain areas.
Okay, thank you.
I think what Lorelai just said is real important, and I'd like it to be possibly caught on the mic. I don't know if if you would mind stepping up and saying that again, and and Brian, maybe just talking about the difference from where we are now, where we are before, because I think that's something that the public should hear as we make this decision.
I I really don't want to say where we are now. I'd say this is more a better security.
There was a recent incident not too long ago with our, one of our drivers that was assaulted by a parent. And fortunately, she had one of the brand-new buses that captured every angle of that, and her word against the parent was proven that the driver was, the the parent was in the wrong, and the driver was absolutely, you know, she wasn't held responsible or disciplined for any reason, because the the angle of all those, the new cameras saw that exactly what played out. But most of our buses have that limited view, where you don't see the driver, and you don't see the actual, where the children board the bus, to see if there's a parent out there being obnoxious or, you know, out of line. So that's the protection that we're looking for, is so that everyone is, you know, you can just pull the tape and it tells the story itself.
Thank you for saying that again.
So what I'm asking tonight is, do we want to make the camera issue a hot issue and move forward?
I mean, I would say I'm willing to move forward with other vendors outside of Bus Patrol. I would prefer to see more quotes, unless this was, was this Co-Stars or anything with Fortress?
They're they're under OMNA and one other federal program, but I can, there's others out there they can get quotes for, but, you know, I think the last time we talked, the consensus was you'd like to see what it would cost to purchase, so I got something right away.
Yeah, I I mean, my, I I'm definitely more in favor of just purchasing them outright than Bus Patrol, in in my opinion. But I I think it would come down to then finding the the best solution that that we could find out of the the outright purchase. So I'm okay moving forward with that, if we can get that information.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to continue this conversation, but if we can get more quotes, that would be great.
Dr. Haller, just out of curiosity, I assume that you're in support of this, and do you think that we should be doing this all at once, or should we be breaking it up and doing it piecemeal, given the cameras we have? Just curious to know your thoughts.
As a a former elementary principal who has gotten to view a lot of video, I am in support of of making sure that these cameras are upgraded, because it does become a matter of of safety. And and there are some buses that don't have the same type or level of equipment that other buses have. So I I do think it adds another layer of protection. So I do believe that if we're going to do it, if the Board pursues it, it should just be done, it should be done all at one time. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Just another question. And I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. The service, there was an additional service that was provided to us through, I think, the the prior contractor that took care, was responsible for identifying all the violations from the stop arm camera.
Right.
And and pursued that, followed that through the, you know, District Court, and collected fines and everything like that. Is there any component of that in this arrangement, Brian?
We would be going back to the same way we're doing now, if we have a a stop arm, a good stop. Right now, every time we have someone violate, you know, go past the flashing lights, you know, we called in, they pull the the picture off on the video. If they can get a good license plate or or a good picture of the car, then they give it to the police, and, you know, that that's the normal operating procedure. So that's what we'd be keep on doing. Where this Bus Patrol actually, they would be doing that and going after the the fines.
So in other words, whatever we're doing right now...
We would still keep on...
What we're doing right now is we would continue, and there wouldn't be that third party intervening on our behalf to take it to, you know, the the local magistrate.
And I I think what happens right now is if they have a violator, they call in, and that night we pull off the video, or we actually pull the card out of the the cameras, try to see if we have a good picture. If we do, then we send it to the police department.
Is it, so is there any third-party monitoring of of what's happening, either on the bus or on the bus stop arm?
Yeah, no.
No? Okay.
The, that's what the the Bus Patrol was, you know, basically, they would deduct any fines they receive or a certain percentage off the 72,000 you pay a year.
Yeah, essentially, their...
Actually, 75,000.
Business model was taking the, any revenue they were they were getting for the fines, and that would get subtracted out of your, well, in this case, a $6,250 monthly technology fee. I I think it would be very unlikely for the district to see any revenue based on, they would have to overcome those fines every month. And those fine totals, basically, are cumulative, so it continues to grow every month as well. So from a revenue standpoint, there's there's no, I don't believe there's any advantage there. I think the only advantage is that you have a third party, like you were saying, that follows through. I think some may consider that a disadvantage because of the potential for errors. I've I've read some comments online about people erroneously getting fines or, you know, not actually violating a law. It's just so happened that the camera picked something up and the person pushed something through, so it's, it's a bit of a double-edged sword. Any other discussion? And just in terms of moving forward, is the Board okay with moving forward with looking at multiple quotes for camera equipment?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
I personally would like to see like kind and quality, though. You know, I don't want to see a program as to which you said, similar to Bus Control, Bus Patrol, something where we internally own the entire process.
Yeah, same. And moving on to item C, this is a discussion about electric school buses. It is recommended the Board of School Directors discuss the purchase of electric school buses.
Okay, if you remember last, last meeting, we actually talked about doing a fleet study and and possibly applying for grants, but it didn't look like it would be worth our while. Since then, I've gotten confirmation that you can actually combine the Federal Clean School Bus Program and the State Truck and Bus Grant Program into one for, so it would give you 406,000 towards every electric school bus purchase. Then they'd also fund the charging infrastructure separately. A new electric school bus right now, last time I looked, was 436,000. So to do this grant, I'd have to apply before August 22nd. That's why I wanted to bring this up, if if the Board wants me to look at, possibly, an electric bus or not. You know me, I hate wasting my time.
I I have two questions about this. The first one is, it says offers 250,000 per bus and charging infrastructure, if you were...
And charging infrastructure.
So so my understanding is that we currently ran conduit, but we did not run the wiring, correct?
Right, the actual, we did not run the wiring or the chargers, but we have the ability to put it in.
And what would the cost to the district be to put that in?
Well, if you got the grant, it would cover the charging infrastructure.
That would include installing it through the conduit?
Correct.
So I'll make this quick and easy from my standpoint. I would be interested in hearing information from other local districts or districts farther away that have similar landscape to ours, and understanding what their feeling is if they've had them, if if they feel as though it's a good option for them or not a good option for them. I'm not saying that I am for or against it, I just don't think I have enough information. I think the last time we talked, there was some concern with them going up and down hills, that they would quickly lose charge. I would just, I would like to hear, not from a bus company, I'd like to hear from a district.
Yeah, I I mean, I think going back to my comments before, I do not want to be the school district that's a beta tester for electric school buses, so I'm going to be a big no on this, until we see others actually starting to use it.
I did about three and a half hours research on this. The average run right now, I don't know what ours is, but the average charge lasts between 120 and 150 miles. There was an example where a athletic team went somewhere and all of a sudden discovered that they didn't have enough miles left on the battery to get home, and they had to make other arrangements. So that's limited use, as far as I'm concerned. I was concerned about the status of the installation of the propane infrastructure. We're talking two large projects at one time. That's just the thing. They talk about charging at night, which naturally, all the civilians are also using their lights, so best to put on a timer between midnight and six o'clock. There's an eight-year life expectancy on the batteries. So while we might get a good deal right now, in eight years, we would probably have to replace the batteries. Now, I looked at a car, and I wondered, geez, why is this thing only $5,000? And then they told me that I was going to have to spend another 15, 10 to 15,000 on batteries. So unless these are going to be a continuing thing, we would have to look at a large expenditure on everything we purchased about eight years out. They also recommended that since the air conditioning and heating runs off battery, it behooves you to have a inside space for storage of electric buses, so that it is air-conditioned, cooled down, or heated up before it goes out to pick up the kids. I don't, I wasn't involved in the bus born, but I don't think we have enough capability there to make the buses comfortable for our children, or even suitable for the kids. So I I don't want to be one of the first people to, first districts to go out on a limb and obligate ourselves to spend an extensive amount of money eight years down the line when we're all gone, and we can surprise the Board that exists at the time, so... I concur with Jason's idea of getting some feedback from, don't, I I was trying to give you a heart attack, damn it! You're you're not, you're not falling over fucking up, but... But I I agree with, we're shifting over to pro... But I, I agree with, we're shifting over to propane.
Well, I'll tell you right now, you know, I would not use an electric bus on a sports trip. I do not use our propane buses on a sports trip because you have to know where you can fill up in propane. We only use diesel on long trips. The only time I could see an electric bus is our flat runs, because we have very short runs compared to most districts. But, you know, I'm not for or against, so.
Additionally, they did mention the maintenance, a lot of it has to be, you don't have, our shade treatment mechanics, and I'm sure we got very much, very qualified mechanics, but you don't want to zap yourself. And we're talking about specialists coming in to maintain, just like the propane, I guess, so.
Yep, and the propane, even our, our mechanics, I think in two years, we start to drop off of warranty, so we're going to have to start having our mechanics trained on propane engines. Right now, it's all covered under the warranty, but down the road, there won't be. So, I know what you're saying. Mr., Dr. Hamburger, I saw you.
Yeah, I'm anxious to push the button over here. Yeah, I would, I would definitely be interested in learning more about it, like I think Tim has kind of alluded to. You know, this is certainly an area that I don't think any one of us are experts on yet. And, and I think the introduction of electric vehicles is just starting to become one of those things that's, you know, that we're starting to learn about, you know? And we can see that, you know, with the large manufacturers of automobiles right now, we're seeing a shift. We're seeing shifts to electric vehicles in a lot of the big cities in regard to their public transportation. And so there's obviously models out there that work right now, and they may be very cost-efficient. I mean, the fact that there are what appear to be fairly significant incentives to be able to, you know, obtain a vehicle like this is very attractive to me. I think we could save a couple hundred thousand dollars just in a single bus. So, I'd like to learn more about it myself. I'd also would be very interested in adding even just a single electric vehicle to our fleet to kind of see how it compares in terms of cost, maintenance, and performance, you know, and as a, as a regular part of our fleet. And I think, you know, going in in a limited manner, you know, going in and, and just applying for, let's say, a single vehicle would give us a chance to kind of, kind of beta test it, if we want to use that term, and, and see whether or not there's some potential or value in it. Certainly, I think right now, when we look at some of the things that we can do, I think, as a district to try to start to mitigate the effects of climate change, you know, the, the use of, of electric vehicles has some real promise, I think. One of the things that there are, one of the reasons there are incentives, there are financial incentives is for that very reason, is to start to kind of motivate organizations like ours to, to consider what we can do to contribute to efforts to address issues of climate change. So, yeah, I'm, I'm for it as much as we can, as far as we can go with it, but I'd like to get more information, like has been mentioned earlier as well.
Do we know if anyone else in Berks County uses electric buses or has any in their fleet?
Well, up until now, the only one in Berks County would have qualified for any grants would have been Redding, and they don't have their own fleet, but now it's opening up to the other schools. So, I'd have to look down towards Montgomery and Philadelphia and Delaware County, because I think they've had some and had success, but when I go up towards, you know, mid-state and upper state, you know, they didn't have charges that would last the second run of the day. And that's really the key to me, you need to be able to do morning and afternoon runs. Just like I said to Mr. Quinter, the propane buses are great, but I don't send them on sports trips because they get stuck somewhere and they don't know where a propane filling station is. I don't need to send out another bus to take the kids in a tow truck and bring it back, you know? So, I, I agree with them. I would not send out an electric bus for a trip, you know? I'd hate to, I think two years ago when we had the summer school, we had kids going to Hamburg and we had four buses stuck on Route seventy-eight and a, and a, by the way, our school buses don't have air conditioning anyway, but we had all the windows open and hot as can be, you know? And if I would have even had a propane electric bus, then that would have run out of power, you know? I'd worry about that. We're gas at least, you know, AAA come out and give you gas to get to the next gas station or diesel, where they don't have fast chargers or, you know, wet fills for propane on the road. So, we keep those local.
So.
What's that? They got heaters. Okay.
So, for the, for the sake of Mr. Feig not wasting time on this, I want to, can we do a straw poll to find out who would like to look into this further and who would not like to? I'd like to understand what those numbers are.
If we're going to do that, can I just ask one quick question? When you talked about getting one bus as a beta type, if you just get one bus, is that going to pay to have them install all of the charging stations?
They only install one charging station.
Okay, so if we bought seventeen buses, they would, they wouldn't charge seventeen? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that one bus per charging station, that's what they would, that's what it would cover?
Because almost always, you do an overnight charge, you don't have a quick charge with such a big battery.
Okay, but I mean, they would, they would do all of the.
They would pay for the infrastructure for the charging.
All of the infrastructure.
It'd actually be cheaper for us because we already have the conduit in.
Right, so it would, I just wanted to make, so would they put in the structure, like all of the?
That would be a structure for a bus-type battery, not a, not an electric, you know, a vehicle-type.
Right, right, but it would be just for one bus and then we could add more or like?
Yeah, that's like, I forget, we have ten or fifteen charging stations or conduits at different places down there. How many is it? Seven, and each one can have a double, so it's actually fourteen buses that could be charged.
Okay, but they would, according to like the four hundred and five thousand or whatever, that would cover having one bus and one charging thing come through? Okay, just wanted to verify that, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to do a quick straw poll. If you are in favor of moving forward and authorizing Mr. Feig to present more information for electric buses and further pursue it, say yes. If you're not in favor, say no, I'm just going to go around the table. I, Mr. Hamburger, or Dr. Hamburger is very anxious for this.
Jason, Jason, can you confirm? So, if this is a no straight across the board, this is, we're done with the conversation of a electric bus, correct?
I would say if it's a majority, no, we're done with.
We're done with any further conversation, okay.
Yes, yes, all right, so Mr. Fidler?
No.
Mr. Quinter?
No.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Not at this time, given there's no other districts in the county.
I'm taking that as a no. Mrs. Wilson? Dr. Hamburger?
Yes.
Dr. Battler?
No.
Dr. Hearing?
No.
And I am a no, no's habits, six to three. We're going to put electric buses to bed. For now. I just feel like we keep talking about it and ready to put it to bed for a little bit.
I, just as a postscript, I also, one of the strengths was that the kids would not be breathing fumes or the drivers. There is no definitive study that says that causes any disease. People talk about it, but there's no juried study that says that's a problem, so. We're not endangering our kids or our drivers.
There must be some reason why we're not allowed to have vehicles idle in front of schools.
It's because some bureaucrat said so.
Well, moving on to item D, contracting of custodial substitutes. This is also a discussion item. It is recommended that the board of school directors discuss the contracting of custodial substitutes. Sorry if I repeated myself. And this was already handed out, I believe it says be made to be clean your hive or purpose. That's the, that's the handout that Mr. Feig handed out, and take it away, Mr. Feig.
Okay, I actually asked, if Steve can come up to the microphone. We've been able to fill custodial positions, but we have not been able to find substitutes. We, I think, I don't want to take away Steve's thunder, but we have an average, I think it's like forty-eight or fifty custodians, and we have an average of five to seven custodians out a day. We're having a hard time keeping the buildings clean because almost every building has some type of event going on, and when an event's going on, our custodians are down trying to make sure the trash cans are empty, the toilets have, have toilet paper in, and the kids aren't running around the halls. So, it's starting to become a problem that we're sort of worried about keeping the buildings clean, which is the custodian's job, and whenever we have people out, we don't have any substitutes to fill into them. So, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul all the time, and I think it's getting to the point that we need to look at some type of contracting out for at least a substitute service. We do that in many other areas in the districts. There's nothing against a unit contract that says we can't do that as a substitute. So, we went out and looked for proposals. I know a lot of districts contract their whole custodial staff. We are not looking to do that. We're just looking to contract out, making sure we have coverage in the buildings, you know? And sometimes in the morning, you know, at six o'clock in the morning, a custodian calls up. We're scrambling to make sure that building's open before the teachers get there and the heat's on and, you know, everything's working. So, Steve, you want to go from here?
Yes, sir, so what I handed the board today was what I promised Mr. Mel and Mr. Morgan back when we did the bus budgeting tour of Alwatten. It took me some time to get a report based up that, which showed just a schedule request. There's another report from maintenance, which I can send to you by email if Dr. Holler is okay with. But I didn't want to share that to the public because that has people's names on it and what they actually do. But this report here is based on, from this date last year till now, so it's a one-year window. Basically, it's showing the amount of events that we hold in our buildings on a daily basis. You can do the calculations. I was sitting back there doing the math, because I wasn't as familiar with it as I thought I should be before I started to come up here. But basically, what it works out to, if my calculations were correct, which my math teacher is probably rolling over in his grave now, is basically three hundred and fifty-five point eight-eight hours per week that are dedicated to events in the schools, with the great majority, almost eighty percent, occurring at the senior high in that complex. So, it actually works out to, I think that building has roughly three thousand of the four thousand events are held there, and that affects the stadium, the cafeterias, the gymnasium, obviously, the auditorium, any areas where we're using. And what we've found is, when you think about it, what does that mean to the function of the school? Well, it means that your lights are on, your heater, air conditioning is on, you're providing custodial coverage, you're also providing water and sewage during this event. So, when you think about it, and I never realized how many events we do, but that's a lot of cost. And that cost is absorbed into the facilities department, and it's absorbed by the taxpayers of the community. So, my job is to make sure that we do that as efficiently as we possibly can. The problem we're running into is that I can't keep custodial coverage enough. So, what inevitably happens is I'll come in on a Monday morning and I find out we've had events that may not have had coverage, or something had occurred, and we'll come into all kinds of things into the buildings, and then we have to get those buildings ready. And this upsets the principals of the building, the administrators and the teachers, because they don't want to come into a dirty building on a Monday morning seeing this. So, there's a yin and a yang to the balance of what you're trying to do. Do I spend the money and the coverage? I really don't have a choice. If it's the functioning or the providing of athletics for students, or the community having a community event, or the teachers having a club meeting, these are all things that I have to consider throughout the course of the day. So, who, who really do I steal from in order to make these things happen? And the problem is, is we're just not able to hire people. We're on the lower end of the salary range in the Berks County School Districts for our custodians, and I know that that's an issue that'll come up when they go to contract in the next couple of years. But right now, we're at a deficit. We average eight people off per day in our department of forty-one. When I did the calculations, it was based off forty-one not having grounds. So, when you take into that, that's twenty percent of your workforce on any given day. So, I'm asking for half that number in order to make coverages and make sure that the buildings are clean. So often, we have buildings that only have three custodians in them. You have one day work and then two second shift, well, actually, one mid and one second shift person who finishes up at eleven P.M. And what we found is, we're asking these people to work a lot of overtime to the tune, I did a calculation based on last September sometime ago, but we're spending quite a bit of money. It's almost two hundred and thirty-five hours overtime in a two-week period just to have these coverages.
What's the dollar figure to that?
I will, I don't know roughly. I know if you take, you have to have the calculation of what the paysers and the health insurance is involved, and I don't know what that rate is right now. Obviously, they just got raises this month, so everything will go up, but I want to say it's on average a thirty-five to thirty-six dollars an hour when you talk about all those coverages plus their salaries.
Actually, I think it's more like forty-two. I think that's what we said, our overtime rate, based on the average overtime with all benefits.
So, what be made submitted to you is at forty-two point five on that scale? So, it's basically, we're paying exactly what we would pay to hire additional four people. The problem is, we're not really an attractive element for, to get four more people, and that also means changing everything, having, you know, some kind of a study to show that we need the extra workforce and to recover for shortages. It's just not a feasible thing to do at this time, and it's probably a discussion that should be held when the board looks at the contract renegotiation. So, I think this is at least a temporary stopgap measure to put in place so that we can continue to march as we have been.
Well, Steve, actually, we'd have to hire five to get four people, because if we hired five people, we'd still have that twenty percent off time.
Right, I think what we're, what we're looking at right now is if you look at, when was the last time these buildings evaluated for the amount of students with the amount of demand? I mean, there's a simple calculation that's available online that'll tell you a percentage of how many people you should have in a building, depending on how many students you have. But really, what you would need to do is a feasibility study and see what, you know, you actually should be required to have, but I can tell you that we're under it. I know we are by a lot. So, my, my problem is, how do I get the maximum amount of work effort out of the people that we're not paying very well at the same time? I'm trying to compete with even Taco Bell to hire people, and it's just not a feasible thing. No one can afford to work and support a family under that salary. So, this is a good stopgap measure until something occurs with the contract to look at increasing salaries for the custodial staff. So, I hate to be the one to come up here and say this, because I know how it appears, but there's just no easy answer.
Are we going to have any problems with the union?
With the company?
With the union?
Union.
That I don't know, I don't know. I know that other school districts in the county do employ companies to do this, and I know that there's nothing in the union contract that says that we can't do that.
We, we attempted previously to build our own substitute pool for custodians. We advertised for it and, and we had no one apply for the substitute, for, to be a substitute pool. As Stephen said, what he's left with is offering overtime to our current custodians who would be willing to work events. And we're not looking to take those opportunities away from our custodians, which what, is what could present a conflict or some difficulty with the, the current contract. But as Stephen said, he's looking to fill the void of when he has a high level of people who are absent. And then in conjunction with that, we also are still having these events. Like, we're not, we're not going to cancel an event because we have, you know, multiple custodians out. So, that's why it's more so looking at adding additional staff as a substitute pool, because we were unable to do that successfully, successfully on our own. I, but I don't anticipate that we still won't be offering, you know, overtime opportunities. But I don't anticipate that we still won't be offering, you know, overtime opportunities to our own staff because we, we do need them because we have so many events.
And my concern is, we're pulling off custodians that should be cleaning classrooms. And, you know, on the night of events, they're basically just emptying trash and watching and taking care of the event because they're pretty much making sure there's no messes and toilet paper in the event area and, you know, everything's fine there. And then the only thing they have time left to do is go into the trash cans in the classroom and not mop floors. And, you know, I know I'm getting calls every day from principals and Steve gets some more than I do. It's like, why is my building a mess?
We have another issue too, and I mean, it's, it's a happy issue. We have four people that are close to retirement, and it's gonna be very difficult for me as I, they leave through the course of the school year for me to replace them and their skill level. And it's, this is almost, I don't want to say it's an imperative, but we really need to do something if we're to stay where we need to be in order to provide services for students and staff.
So would these substitutes then be, like, cleaning the schools while, like, the other people are working at the events? Is that the plan?
So basically, what the game plan is, is one of the job positions we have, we have a normal custodian. And then usually what we do is we try to hire what we call floaters. And these floaters are people that can be tasked to work at any building. But it's very difficult to hire somebody like that. Or if we do hire them, they get very disenfranchised quickly with moving around from building to building because literally one day you're at Lorraine, the next day you could be at the junior high. Then, you know, you're not really in working with one crew in one set area, you're doing multiple areas. So there's a lot to learn. So these folks would come in to do that. This would be, this would give Mr. Young the opportunity to say, hey, I'm short a person at Lorraine today. Head to Lorraine, be there at this time, you know, and then he can run them on that basis. And if there would be a day where, and it's quite remarkable, I could show you the calendar because I found it, you know, funny as I started going through it. I think the best day I had in September, I only had three people off plus three people out long-term, so it was six. And it's like, when you're looking at that and then you're the manager of that group, you, you need to figure that out. You know, like, where are we gonna pull people from to make sure that this event goes off or if the school is clean? Or on average, they're cleaning between twenty-four to twenty-eight classrooms a night, each custodian, and they're doing four gang bathrooms. Plus, they're doing gym events, cafeterias, kitchens, everything's on a schedule. So if you're missing that at a school like Lorraine where you only have three custodians, you're, you're really, you're really in trouble. So these people would be able to fill that gap.
We have visited this before and had discussion with the board, I believe, previously. And had been trying to work with another company to get two people on a, I think, a rotating basis. And they were unable to do so. That was in kind of the height of COVID, where we were doing extensive cleaning on a regular basis. So it's not something that we haven't visited before, and it's not unlike what we do with our, with our busing, where it is our preference to hire our own bus drivers to, to work in the district because they have a relationship here and a pride in our school district. However, with the difficulty of hiring bus drivers, just like you approved tonight, where you have to outsource some of the runs, like, you know, the BCTC and the parochial runs through, you know, BCIU. This is, this is the same, this is basically the same situation, but just what we're doing with custodians. So, you know, I wanted to assure everyone that we're not, not going to attempt to hire custodians. We're not, we're not doing that. It's just to assist when we are having difficulty managing different events for custodial coverage or, you know, we have a high absentee rate.
And if we do have a day where we're not covering somewhere, then they can clean floors or do more of a detailed clean in certain areas of the school. Because like my, I find throughout the course of the school year, and I'm sure the principals and administrators could attest, what happens is, we start off very great, and then we'll be able to maintain for a while. And then by the time you get to Christmas break, you'll spend all of Christmas break just trying to get the building back up to where it was. You know, and then we'll come right back, and then it gets hammered with salt, snow, all this stuff from the outside. The things are going on, snow removal. And then by the time you get to summer, it's like, I just want to tear the whole building apart and clean it because it feels disgusting to me. So this might help us to be more detailed on our floor programs and with detailed cleaning in some of the areas it required.
Anytime that you have as many people in an enclosed space as we do in schools, they're filthy. And you might have, I, I know I got the greatest kids in the world, but they're still filthy little rats. And the, the COVID emphasizes the need for appropriate sanitation. One of the proudest things that I was ever told about Exeter was a surgeon whose practice I managed. Spent a day here for some reason, don't even know why. His daughter was over here. Home district is why I'm missing. And he took the time to call me up at night and say how impressed he was with the condition of our grounds and the condition of our schools. So if you need to hire a few people, I'm gonna support you till the cows come home. Thank you.
Steve, is this per diem or would this be a four-member team that you would hire and they would give you these hours permanently until we?
So, so the way it would work is would be a year, a year contract with them for now until we looked at? One of the problems that we're running into is, there's other school districts that do this, but there's one down the road that I used to work at that they hire everybody outside. And what you'll come to find is, is that's not as good. You know, and I hate to criticize them because I live in that community, but it's not as good. Not because they don't try and they don't have dedicated staff to do it. But what inevitably happens to us is you're gonna end up paying extra for everything because not everything can be contractualized. So you can't concentrate or calculate down to, into the dirt every little detail. You know, it costs this much to take food from the senior high to the junior high or whatever. So what this will enable us to do is have four dedicated people. So they would have to provide four people every day that would have to be, report at the times that we designate on schedule. And then we would pay a contract amount per month, and I think that the totals should be on there. But when you average it out, like Brian was saying, it's forty-two an hour for what we're paying our own folks. It's forty-two point five for what we're paying them.
How many openings do you have right now?
Unbelievably, we just hired two. So we have one currently, we have two that are out long-term injury. We have another that's possibly going out, four retirees. So we'll come out of summer and we'll probably look, on paper, we'll look pretty good. But the reality of it is, is we'll be four to five short on the first day of school.
This year?
This year.
You'll have four to five actual openings?
Oh, you'll have four, well, you can't consider them the openings because technically, even though they may be out long-term injury, they're still listed employee and you can't replace that person.
And you're average eight?
Eight per day.
Eight per day call out?
Well, you're averaging four. Like, you may have, so you'll average someone who may be out on a comp issue. You'll average somebody that might be out for a personal issue long-term. And then, then you get into another four, which is your vacation personals, bereavement, emergency days, stuff like that.
And we're paying for those days?
They, they're contractual for those employees, that's correct.
So first of all, I, I'm all for having clean schools and, and, and keeping our grounds clean. And I'm also for hiring a company that is Exeter or St. Lawrence-based. I think that that's a great use because they're local. There is nothing in this contract that suggests that this service has ever done anything considered commercial. It looks to me like it's residential. Do you know if they have experience doing?
They currently work at Governor Mifflin.
Okay. I, I guess my big hangup right now is, is that we have one opening, which means we're essentially paying our budgeted amount, and we're asking for another three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that isn't budgeted for.
Well, actually, we have another two hundred thousand budgeted for, for substitutes, which we can't fill.
So we're at?
We've been, we've been advertising for custodial substitutes for a while, or floaters, as he calls them, you know, and we can't fill those. But they're not full-time permanent staff, if you want to call it.
And this is trying to look down the road because I have two retiring in October, and that doesn't account for anything that can happen with the other forty-one employees.
So from my standpoint, I mean, I'd certainly welcome looking into this further if the board's willing. But if we have budgeted, how much do we have budgeted for substitutes?
I think it's two-twenty, I gotta go back, it might be two-twenty-five, but.
I mean, if they're, if they're gonna stick with the forty-three, I mean, I would consider looking at a, you know, an eight-month contract that kept us within that two hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget. I don't think we have the room right now, based on what we've just heard for the last several months, to go and what we could potentially look at next year to spend more money than we currently have budgeted for. But, I mean, if, if we have budgeted money and we can stay within that budget and it would be a service to you guys, then I would support it.
You know, what I'd ask, this is, this was an estimate because I, I think we looked at five different companies. And this one could supply definitely four. One said they can do two at the max, and one said they, they're just booked up. You know, so we'd have to go back and get a final number, you know, with the contract that we can bring to the board to say in August.
I was also gonna recommend that we did it like school year days, like maybe a hundred and eighty student days. I know we have probably need outside of that, but at least start with that.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with whatever assistance I can get. I'm not gonna, not gonna look at.
Yeah, I, I would say by the month or the eight months or nine months because our school days, that's when we have students here, but we have kids in the buildings and use probably nine to ten months a year, you know, including weekends.
There is one benefit too to hiring this company versus what we do inside. If there was a liability issue, someone slips or falls, we're not liable, that's part of the contract. We don't pay benefits, you know, we're paying an hourly fee, and they have to provide the four individuals.
It's under their workers' comp.
There's penalties for them not performing.
Have, have we looked at any other vendors that are willing to work with us on the pricing model?
I'm sure we could find some. Here, here's the issue I'm having. It's a very competitive market right now.
Sure.
The pricing is all over, and there's not a lot of local companies. Most of the companies, when you start doing the research, are either based out of Lancaster, Allentown or Philadelphia.
Okay.
So they want more money because they're gonna travel the distance, they're gonna have to set up shop in this area.
Yeah, I was, I was more referring to somebody in Berks County, if there were any other vendors.
It's, there are, there are, but like a lot of the ones you call, they're, they're like not interested in returning your call because they're already booked out with what they have with other, like, people.
Yeah, I, I mean, like, Mr. Moore, I'd be good with moving forward, but I think from my end, I, I would like us to at least make sure that they, we, we have exhausted any attempt to try to get quotes from other vendors. I, I just don't like getting one proposal in front of us just to, I, I would still like to see something to compare it to if we have that ability to. But I understand if it's just, you know, hard to do because of the, the demand that's out there. Appreciate it.
Yeah, and a little off topic, I, I didn't provide this so that I can beat you over the head with it. This is so that, I did promise you that I would have it for you, and I do. If you want the maintenance one, please let me know and I'll share that with you. We averaged through the school year fourteen hundred work orders. I think the average per employee was around two fifty each. So it does show that they're putting the hours in and what they're doing. It's helping to us to identify cost. Yeah, so I just wanted to let you know that if, if you would like that, I'll, I'll send it over.
I, I appreciate you, you bringing it up, and, and we did ask for it, so absolutely. And if you need the help, I think that, you know, we have to, we're obligated to look at that. I just also think we have budget dollars, so I think that it all has to fit into the same mold. And if we, and if we know what the budget dollars are, you know, you know your, you know your job, I don't, right? So if, if you need people all year long and you, that means you cut it down to three people or, or you need four people for eight months, I mean, I'd certainly willing, be willing to listen to how you wanna cookie cut that. But I think that we have to stay within what we budgeted for.
If you ask my wife, I can cry with the best of them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there any objections to having Mr. Biggerstaff move forward with getting, digging into this further for us? Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring this back to the August Cal.
Doctor Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thanks, Doctor Herring. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve the following policies for second reading, policy two seventeen graduation and policy two thirty-three suspension and expulsion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thanks, Doctor Herring. That's all for the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Athletic Extracurricular Activity Committee, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, I just have one thing tonight. I just wanted to say congratulations to our twenty nineteen graduate Trey Page. This afternoon, Trey was drafted by the St. Louis Cardinals in the MLB draft.
Very exciting news. Okay, Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Battler.
Sorry there. ECEF is excited to host our annual fifteenth, annual golf outing on Friday, August eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you to all of the sponsors and golfers who have already signed up. If you're interested in information on our event, please email us at golf@exetereducationfoundation.org. Also, we'd like to share a save the date for our first-ever ECEF gala celebration to commemorate our fifteenth anniversary. This event will be held on Friday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-three at the Reading Country Club. More details will be reported as planning gets underway.
Dr. Battler, I had August fourth, Friday, August fourth, or that, was that a typo? Okay, I just wanted to make sure so we don't change the date on them.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's August fourth.
Okay.
So not November tenth?
Sorry. So the, the fifteenth annual golf outing is Friday, August fourth, but there's also a save the date for the gala, which is November tenth, Friday, November tenth.
Thank you, I want to make sure I get my tickets. Appreciate that.
So, ring for birthday.
Oh, wonderful, okay. Mr. Fiddler, are you able to give a report for the BCTC Joint Committee?
I think I can probe my way through it. There'll be no, no meeting of the BCTC Board this month. I today sent around the joint operating committee briefs from the June meeting, so our next meeting will be in August.
Great, thank you, Mr. Fiddler, hope you feel better. Dr. Hamburger, can you cover BCIU Board Directors and Legislative Liaison?
Yes, I can. BCIU, no meetings as, same as BCTC, no meeting scheduled for July. Next meeting is August seventeenth. In terms of the legislative report, just a couple items I'd like to speak to. One has to do with charter, cyber charter schools. There was significant advocacy and efforts from public school leaders and school boards like Exeter who adopted resolutions and made phone calls and visits and sent messages to their legislators. And the House ultimately passed a comprehensive cyber charter reform bill under House Bill one four four two. And this was a bill authorized by Representative Crushy from Montgomery County. The bill ensures greater accountability, increased transparency, and sets fair payments to cyber charters while maintaining choice for public education. A couple of parts of it, I just, I'll mention here, which I think are particularly important. There'll be a, if this bill is ultimately approved by the Senate, which is unlikely, there'll be a standard statewide rate for non-special education students of eight thousand dollars. Currently, that range is somewhere between seventy-nine hundred dollars and twenty-five thousand dollars based on the school district demographics and, and regular expenses for special, or for their overall costs. So that's a big difference right now, and, and to bring it down to eight thousand would be, even the savings for Exeter School District, I think we're spending probably closer to thirteen or fourteen thousand per student, you know. Also, a tiered formula for special education funding. The dollars would be allocated based upon actual costs associated with special education services as opposed to right now, which is a sort of a, a generic cost, which really has nothing to do with services that are provided. It would place a cap on unassigned fund balances for cyber charters. We require them to report to the, on the rates in which they identify students for special ed to make sure they're not over-identifying and also require. ed to make sure they're not over identifying and also require wellness checks for students to make sure of their well-being, also to verify they're participating. Some other interesting parts that we added, if this bill goes through, they'll help be required to have committee meetings and school board meetings in, in public using the Sunshine Act and they'll have the same financial and ethical reporting standards as public schools do. So, you know, trying to bring cyber charters and charter schools in general in line with what we do in public education and kind of level the playing field right now. The big issue is really the, the grossly outdated funding formula, which I think would be the major relief for school districts. Finally, just a comment about the budget. I know we're not there yet. The Pennsylvania budget still has a ways to go. It seemed like the big hangup was the hundred million dollar school voucher program that was rejected by the, the Democratic majority in the House. The Senate obviously is not prepared to accept the, the budget and the, and the, as it's currently prepared by the, and, and approved by the House and recommended by Governor Shapiro. Governor Shapiro sort of changed course. He originally was talking about his support for school choice and for some degree of, of voucher program, but he, he shifted gears, I think, hearing from the strong voices from public school advocates, organizations like PSBA, who believe that all of that money, that hundred million dollars should be dedicated to really kind of shoring up some of the funding gaps that currently exist in public education right now. Obviously, the lawsuit that was just recently in Pennsylvania challenging the, the, the funding process in Pennsylvania for public schools and, and the victory that was gained by public education had a big impact upon it as well. And that money probably should go to start to remedy some of the funding imbalances that occur in, in public education today. So anyway, that's all for my report. Let's just hope the budget moves forward at some point and, but who knows? Maybe, Brian, you have some insights into that.
Yeah, we're at June forty-first. I figured it'll go to June seventieth. Because they haven't even come back to, in session, have they?
I was talking with one of our august legislators and he more or less said that we're going to get more than we did last year, but the fact that we have two different parties holding the different chambers is slowing the whole thing down and he wouldn't even make an estimate. So I told him I was going to borrow money from him if we ran out.
What, what upsets me is they, they put out a budget in February and then they'll start to work on it till last week of June. But yet we have to, by law, have ours passed by June thirtieth. They're supposed to have theirs passed by the end of June, but.
Dr. Herring, that's all for my report.
Thank you very much. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Mall.
Yes, I have quite a few items here. The first is Exeter, the, there was a meeting last night of the Board of Supervisors for Exeter Township. The supervisors approved moving forward with advertising a public hearing to hear the potential zoning map change from light industrial to urban residential for a parcel that's located behind Home Depot. As you recall, the Metropolitan Development Group is looking to build two hundred and sixteen unit apartment complex back there. The date and time of the public hearing is yet to be determined. There were already two public meetings hosted by the developer earlier this year at the Redding Country Club. Moving on, the township also received one bid for the Promenade property. That bid was rejected at last night's meeting. Will go out for rebid. And I believe I had mentioned that the Township Commons District was actually changed to allow residential in there where this property would fall. So it's up for debate yet on what, what potential bidder could come in with and, and what would be built there if approved. Next is the, the supervisors also approved authorization for the township tax collector to accept credit cards for municipal and county tax bills. Has, I guess this is a question for administration, has the township or borough tax collector reached out to us for a similar authorization?
She had at the end of, or actually Friday, I think it was, so it was too late to get on this agenda.
Okay.
But I have questions, you know, they're saying because the county did last year, but who pays the fees, you know?
From, yeah, from the discussion last night, at least at the supervisors' meeting, it sounds like the individuals paying the bills actually would front the fee then as well, the credit card fee.
So they would tack that onto the bill too, on the payment?
Correct, yeah. So whoever's paying with a credit card would end up paying that one to two percent fee for, for the, in addition to the, the actual charge, so.
But that would have, probably be a resolution we'd have to pass in taxing ordinance.
Yeah.
So it's not that simple. They, they have their next bills or what, next year? So we, we, we'd already passed our taxing bill for this year, we'd have to amend.
Yeah, it would, it would be applied to next year, you know, I, I would imagine if, if we would authorize this. So that, that is something that maybe we should discuss at the next Cal, if, if that's something we could get on the agenda, if we, if we feel like we're ready to talk about it.
I think we need, you would need to get some more information from the tax collector about the plan, any proposed plan.
She basically said they'd like, what they, she would like to do is a county, I guess, in March decide to accept credit card payments and why can't we, you know?
Yeah.
So I'd have to talk to the county and see how they're, what they're doing.
Was, were, were you only approached by the Exeter Township Tax Collector?
Only the Exeter Township.
Okay, all right. So it's even a question if St. Lawrence Borough Tax Collector wants to do this?
But they usually talk together in one person.
Sure. Okay.
Why would we, just out of curiosity, why would we consider using a credit card if we had to pay additional fees and we can, and we have a route right now that we could pay it for free?
I, I.
Some people speculated online that i- if the fee is low enough, you may actually be able to make out by earning more in points and.
I, I think there was some type of.
Things like that with a credit card and.
Government issue about us discounting, which is truthfully a discount if you pay the fee for that, so.
And some, some individuals may. Some, some individuals may not have the funds when the bill is due and may opt to or would rather put it on a credit card versus taking that sum of money or if they don't do the installment payments, taking that out direct from their checking account. So I don't know where all the advantages are or why they offer it, but it's, if it's no money that we're paying, I don't see what the harm is in, in us authorizing it.
And, and I would assume that any, any authorization would include whatever service fees that the district might tack on so that there's no cost to the district.
Correct. Yeah. So that was a discussion item, sorry, wanted to understand if we even were approached with that. Lastly, I, I had reached out to Robert May and Warren Lubinow on the St. Lawrence Borough Council, wanted to make them aware. There was some misleading information that was presented during a public comment at their June meeting. The inaccurate comment had stated that the school board is looking at developing the crosstown connector, which connects it to, in the discussion, which talks about connecting to Elm Street in the borough. And Mr. May did get back to me and says he, he does plan to notify the council at their next meeting on July thirteenth so that they are aware that this is not something the school board is actually considering at this time. It was merely a discussion which everyone is entitled to have. Okay. That is it for my report.
Thank you. Did, did they have their meeting Sunday regarding the water, Pennsylvania water?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, there, there was a meeting. I believe there, there were a fairly decent turnout at the high school auditorium.
Correct.
Yes, I believe there might be some future ones as well.
Thank you. I was wondering. Okay, next would be public comment. No one has signed up. Would anyone on the board like to be heard at this time? I, I did, I have one quick question. I went down to Happy Landings just to get a peek of what that kind of looks like down there. It's definitely been hit hard by the storm as our whole area has been. I get it. Who's responsible for cleaning that up? It really is a mess down there.
It's the township because they have the lease on the park. I went down the other day and took pictures and sent them the tomahawk and we looked at it. It looks like the bridge is still intact, but there's a lot of trees and stuff around us, so you really can't cross it. He was going to contact the township, but I'm sure the township probably has more important things like drains and roads to get open before they tackle that. Normally, when trees went down, they would come over with the crew and saw them up. So, but I, I don't think it's, I, I expect maybe next week.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, I totally get it's not a priority.
I said, don't push them because they probably have roads and.
Oh, yeah.
It's more important things in township. But yeah, we do run across that bridge and cross country, but it's not just.
Well, yeah.
The bridge itself, there's piles of rocks that came down the creek and other woods.
Big tree trunk in front, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, but the, it, it looks like the bridge is intact, it's just you can't get, you have to climb through the, the wood mess to get on it.
Should we be putting something around it for protection, insurance wise?
On this side, you know, just to put, but it really doesn't matter because the kids aren't going to.
Well, if we put cones, at least we said, no, I get it. At least we said we tried though.
Yeah, there is, they did put the, what do they call it? One of those big, yeah, blockade things on the path, you know, the orange and white circle things.
On the one side?
On this side.
On our side?
Outside, yeah. I didn't see the outside, but it put one on the path, but.
Oh, I didn't see it on our side.
Still see people walking around, you know, looking for what came down the creek.
I get, I get that, okay.
And Mr. Fidler, will you just keep us posted that there is some kind of remediation that we do hear from, from?
Yeah, because I'm sure Tom's really going to make sure of that because our cross-country team runs across that.
Sure, yeah.
They'll soon be practicing and, you know, we don't want kids running through the creek and, you know, next fall, a lot of kids like to walk to school or at least walk home, you know?
Yep.
Yeah, I was just, I was kind of anticipating we might have a, a brief conversation about the Antietam School District and their dilemma. And I, I just kind of wanted to open that up for any comments or any thoughts about that because I think we all feel, you know, we feel their pain. I mean, it could have very easily been the Exeter School District and, you know, we don't, would never want to be in a situation like that. Just wondering, I don't know if superintendents have had any conversation about this or other, you know, anyone else, but I, I think, you know, it certainly merits our thought in, in terms of what we, how we might be able to help out.
So Dr. Rockland, Heidi did reach out to us on, on Monday morning and Heidi and I have known each other for years. She used to actually work in Exeter. They did ask for support to keep their summer feeding program up and running that's happening at the rec center. And the rec cent, rec center thankfully was not, is still intact and is being used. So they are currently using one of our kitchens, the Jacksonville Kitchen. Courtney Epler, our Director of Food Services, has been amazing in assisting them, so that is, that is starting and we were more than happy to do that. We did offer to Heidi and her administrative team the use of our, our buildings. If they wanted to work out of any of our buildings, we would be happy to support that. And the other evening, the other day, Brian Gottschall, who was in charge of Emergency Management Services here in the county, had reached out about putting together an emergency center, help center here in the school district out of one of our buildings. And it appears as though that, that will be, that potentially could be happening within the next week if they choose to use this site, which we were very happy to offer our buildings to them to support not just Antietam and Exeter families that may have been impacted, but also families from Maiden Creek. So this would actually be at the county-wide site. We thought that that could potentially be helpful because we do have a food pantry here that they could utilize as services and a, and a clothing pantry that, you know, we, we would speak to the other groups who, who use this building to try and offer as much support as we possibly can. So Heidi shared with me that they, she would, you know, kind of keep us in the loop here as far as, you know, anything else that they need, but we're on standby, waiting to provide any, any help that we can and, and as we're asked, we'll provide updates to the board.
Did they say, does this Heidi or Dr. Rockland have any sense of how they might be handling student instruction starting September? I mean, do they think that, that the school would be ready for kids to come back to or do they need another location to, for their kids in terms of their instructional program?
I'm not sure that they're there yet. You know, it, I, I've only seen what, I've only, I only know what I've seen and read in the news, which is that as of right now, they're, they're just assessing the damage of the building and, and trying to determine how fast they can clean it up or if it can be cleaned up. So I, I think once they, they get through that process, she'll have a, a better sense of what they need and, and where they're going to, what they're going to need to do in, in the fall for students. So I expect within the next probably week or so that they'll have a better sense of that.
Yeah, and I, I can add a little to that because I've gone through some of this in other districts. The state also help them make decisions, but they'll, I, I'm sure she's trying to figure out what to do and once she knows, she'll have to go to her board and their board have to make the decisions and then, you know, once they make the decisions, we'll probably find out, but they got a lot of work to do between the state themselves and their board, you know? Because the state will want to see all the options and there'll be emergency money to, to remediate some of it. I think you already saw the governor was here, you know? And this is an unusual situation. When they've had problems like this in other districts, the districts had buildings to be able to expand to if they add or up their size, but this district does not have that. So it's a unique situation.
Okay. Thank you. Following this meeting, we will meet for an executive session to discuss personnel matters. Our next board meeting will be Tuesday, August first at six P.M. for a committee of a whole meeting.